I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, City of Goodyear, today on Wednesday, April 16th. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all commissioners are present. And next order of business, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, held on March 19th, 2008.
So moved.
I have a motion, Commissioner Lortano, and a second from Commissioner Laxall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it seven zero. Okay, next order of business is we have a new Planning Commissioner, Luke Schlosser, and I'd like to welcome him to the Planning Commission. Luke and I go back long ways, we're Leadership West Class Eight. And at this time, I'd like, I think you need to stand, and the clerk will read the oath, and you will repeat after her.
I, Luke Schlosser.
I, Luke Schlosser.
To affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
To affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And be candid against all enemies whatever.
And be candid against all enemies whatever.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge duties of planning and zoning commission.
And then I will faithfully and impartially discharge duties of planning and zoning commissioner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm. All right, welcome. Okay, now, public comments. If anybody wants to speak on a non-adjunct item, would you fill out one of these cards and pass it to the clerk of the commission? And I don't see anybody, so we will move on to the next thing. Disclosure of ex parte communications. Anybody on this side have any ex parte communications they need to disclose?
None.
None? Okay, seeing none. Next order of business is the consent agenda, which the commission may, by a single motion, pass all the items. We have three items on the consent agenda. We have case 0620000021, Goodyear City Center Northeast District Rezone. Staff was recommending that a public hearing for this case be continued until May 21st, regular Planning Commission meeting. We have case number 0620000021, Goodyear City Center Southeast District Rezone. Also, staff is recommending that this be continued until the May 21st, regular commission meeting. And last but not least is case 0620000023, Goodyear City Center Southwest District Rezone. Again, requesting to be continued until May 21st, the regular Planning Commission meeting. May I have a motion? Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to?
A move. Do you approve the consent agenda?
Aye, second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Williams, and a second from Commissioner Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it seven zero. Okay. First order of new business is case 083000001, Jack in the Box Drive-Thru Restaurant Request. This is a public hearing for a use permit for a Jack in the Box restaurant on .9 acres, generally located in the Canyon Trails Town Center. And I will open the public hearing, and Steve Carecchio, our staff member, will make the presentation. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission Members. This is a use permit to allow convenience use within Canyon Trails Town Center. The center is located here along Cotton Lane, north of Yuma Road. Specific location for this Jack in the Box is Pad B, which is in the southern section of the center. Surrounding uses around the center include you have existing residential here in Canyon Trails. Also, south of Yuma Road through here, we have a restaurant bar just south of the pad, and then some existing contracting yards here. Cross to the west, across Cotton Lane, you'll have proposed commercial here at the northwest And this is just a bit of an overview of Pad B, where it is, relations to the center. This is Yuma Road here. The reference point here probably is Anchor A, which is the super target that the commission has seen through several applications the past couple of years. The center is zoned, city equivalent of C2, our general commercial. Within that zoning classification, convenience uses, in this case, the fast food restaurant with the drive-thru, does require a use permit. And this is the proposed site plan for the restaurant. Yuma Road here is to the bottom. Cars will enter in from the parking lot to the west of the site, enter the drive-thru queue, wrap around the building. The menu board, the preview and menu boards are located right here. And then the pickup window is here, which faces into the center, north into the center. And this is one of the conceptual elevations of the center. This elevation does incorporate some of the architectural elements within the center, all of the colors, all of the materials, the stone, some of the tower elements, the tile roof. All of these are consistent with the design guidelines for the Canyon Trails. Through our review, staff finds that the proposed use will be compatible with the existing and planned uses in the area, and will not be detrimental to the surrounding area. Most of the adjacent uses will be commercial. It is in a commercial center, established for uses such as this. The nearest residential is located about 600 feet to the east, in this location here. But what you have in the intervening space is you have existing, or planned existing, planned and existing, commercial uses, and 100-foot wide drainage and trail easement that runs along that eastern boundary of the center. As such, staff did find that this use permit met our evaluation criteria. We are recommending approval, subject to the four stipulations in the staff report. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Questions of staff? Commissioner Williams?
Where's Jack?
What?
Where's Jack?
Jack's coming. Jack's coming. Any questions over here?
I have a question, Steve. This more relates to general, what's happening in this vicinity. There's a car wash that was tentatively platted to be just to the east of this. Can you update us on where that stands, or?
There's the car wash right to the east. They do have a use permit approval for the car wash. And I think, I think we've been in conversations, and I get this, there's also another, Danny's in the West Core Power Center. That one is in for site plan. This one, I think, has been just discussions right now of preparing the site plan. They have yet to come in for that.
But when, now, do they have to get a special use permit?
They did get that, Mr. Chairman.
They did get that when the original, when the original plating for the first part, first phase of this went through, right?
Right.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Let me ask, does the applicant want to say anything?
Mr. Chairman, I have a talk. For the record, my name is Kofi Ado. I'm a CIE engineer representing Jack in the Box. Unfortunately, Jack cannot be here today. Mr. Chairman, I totally agree with what Stephen said. I've been working with him, and we would like to see that we will comply with whatever stipulations was put forth for that center, and make sure it fits into the city's scope of things, as well as the surrounding area, so that we have a good development out there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Questions, questions, questions? Okay, does anybody from the public wish to make comment on this case? Okay, in that case, I am going to close the public hearing. And is there any commission discussion before we ask for a motion?
Now, this is just before I make this, my comment that, oh, a restaurant can actually comply with the surrounding building elements?
Oh, gosh.
That's not.
You had to be here for the last meeting.
You had to be here for the last meeting. It's not yours, but we're very pleased that you are complying with the general scope of the design guidelines for the center. Take note of that.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. In that case, I will request a motion to approve this case, please?
Motion moved to recommend approval of the case 083000001, Jack in the Box Drive-Thru Restaurant Special or Use Permit or such.
I have a motion from Vice Chair DeBrocker.
I'll second.
And a second from Commissioner Lax. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you too.
Okay, our next order of business is case 0720000017, an amendment to the portion of the Montecito Phase III Australia Planned Area Development. And I will open the public hearing on this, and David Canning is going to make the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. I'd like to draw your attention to the map image to help provide a visual context for this PAD amendment case. Montecito, which was formerly known as Villages 7 and 9, is highlighted in red on this exhibit, and has three phases totaling 1,400 acres. A total of 4,058 dwelling units were approved to be built in Montecito, according to the Villages 7 and 9 PAD, which is approved in 2004. This next exhibit identifies as the three phases of Montecito. Phase 1 has approximately 380 acres. Phase 2 has 166 acres, and Phase 3 has 857 acres. Phases 1 and 2 have been plotted and are currently being developed. And this next exhibit identifies the proposed 512-acre amendment area, and that's the area which is hatched. And this other area that's not hatched in purple is the remaining portion of Phase 3, which is not a part of this amendment. And this is another exhibit showing the same thing, but an aerial photograph. And this exhibit here shows the proposed land uses in the subject amendment area. With this PAD amendment, the applicant is requesting to amend the land uses and development standards for 512 acres of Montecito Phase 3, and to transfer 826 dwelling units from Phases 1 to, and a portion of Phase 3, to the subject 512-acre amendment area. Currently, 1,482 dwelling units are permitted to be built within the subject 512 acres. With a transfer of 826 dwelling units in the PAD amendment area, a total of 2,308 dwelling units could be built. And this will be at a higher density than what was originally intended for this area. The intent, according to the applicant, is to create a walkable community based on traditional town planning concepts. A variety of housing types, smaller size blocks, shorter streets, island parks, and a community plaza area are planned. And the applicant is also proposing a new business park land use within this PAD along Willis Road. And this will serve as an employment district for the community. The PAD amendment will have, or the PAD amendment area will have a variety of housing types, and lot sizes which range from 42 by 90 feet to 57 by 120 feet. Housing products will include single-family detached and attached homes in a variety of styles. Multi-family units are also included in the PAD in the form of townhomes, apartment flats, flats, and condominiums. A set of creative design guidelines, or creative lot design guidelines have been provided within the PAD to ensure that each residential neighborhood will not be garage dominant. Preliminary plot has also been included as a separate application that covers the western portion of the amendment area. And this covers parcels 9.7A, B, and C, 9.15A and B, 9.16A and B, 9.17A and B, 9.19, 9.2A and B. And this preliminary plot will set divide approximately 151.2 acres into 448 single-family, detached residential lots, and three single-family attached residential tracts, and 59 landscape open space tracts. The residential site area equals approximately 73 acres, and the open space area equals approximately 47 acres. And the proposed gross density within this area will be 2.96 dwelling units an acre. The citizen review meeting notice was mailed to all property owners within 500 feet of the subject property. No residents have voiced any opposition to the subject request. Staff supports the PAD amendments, and, as well as the tenant preliminary plot request, based upon the findings as outlined in the staff report, and is recommending approval of both cases, subject to stipulations. And this concludes my presentation.
Okay, for the record, I'd like to make sure that the people watching, or anybody reviewing this, that we have also had a staff presentation on case 0750000115. And I will officially do that as a separate motion, but just in case anybody's watching, that's all we've had a presentation on. Questions of staff? Commissioner Williams?
Can you just talk for a minute about the difference between detached executive residential, detached primary residential, and detached creative lot residential? Is the difference just size and probably cost, or is there more to it than that?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the answer to that would be yes. The difference is primarily in size of the lots.
Thank you.
Questions?
Commissioner Lax? I mean, I noticed that we did these two cases, but why not the next one as well?
The next case actually falls outside of the PAD amendments.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions of staff? Refresh my memory, there is a wastewater treatment facility that has been zoned, and also has an odor easement of 1,000 feet, if I remember correctly, around it, which basically encompasses Section 9.36, 9.37, 9.38. Basically, everything south of East Conestoga Drive, between Willis Avenue and Rainbow Valley Do we need an additional stipulation in this land swap to run with the land concerning the easement, and the fact that, you know, houses or anybody built in there will have, be subject to possible odor, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, we don't believe another stipulation is required. If you would turn to page five of the staff report, there is a discussion of this wastewater treatment plant facility, as well as the existing 350-foot easement area and 1,000-foot easement area. Within the 350-foot easement area, no residential uses, park uses, office or retail uses are allowed at this point. Those uses will not be allowed until odor and noise controls are installed on this wastewater treatment plant facility. And actually, there was a development agreement adopted by Resolution Number 2006-1027, which specifically placed that easement, or caused that easement to go into effect for the property. So we believe that is sufficient.
Okay. Any other questions of staff?
The wastewater treatment plant, though, that's up and running today.
That's correct.
So if somebody's going to buy a lot, they can, I mean, they know it's there.
But it's up and running, but it's open. It's not been covered or enclosed. So I believe, and we can ask the applicant, but I believe the 1,000-foot odor easement is applicable until this is either built out or covered. And I'm going to, do you have anything, does anybody have any other questions of staff?
Chairman, members of the commission, David Prescott with Newland Communities, 2850 East Calvert Road, Suite 300, Phoenix, Arizona. And also with, today I have Chuck Cader with Hunter Green Associates, and he's also the applicant on this, and he's our project engineer. First of all, I'd like to point out that we do agree with the staff report and with the staff stipulations. We have no discussion there. I want to also point out that we do have an email that we sent to David beyond the 2005 that's noted in the staff report. We have an additional email from the school district, as of March 10th of this year, indicating that they were in agreement with the PAD amendment. And one thing I wanted to point out, David went through the numbers of what we were doing, and what I'd like to do is take two minutes, explain why we're doing it. And the thing is that, we came into Montecito and looked at Montecito, or Village 7, 9, or whatever you want to call it, there was too much of the same. The PR and executive lots, which are 75 by 130, there was, all those subdivisions were happening over and over again, which means you had no diversity in the housing stock whatsoever. And this becomes a problem because, as the population of the city of Goodyear grows, the household makeup of the city becomes more and more diverse, which means that as the segment of the population becomes more diverse in terms of the makeup of the households, the demand for different types of housing becomes more diverse. And we were not accommodating that. So we had to go backwards and kind of readdress that issue as the city's growing. Right now, I don't know if you know or not, but, you know, based on the census bureau, if you go back through and look at their numbers, approximately 50% of all households in the United States are one- and two-person households. The reason why that's important is because, as household sizes get smaller, the demand for interior and exterior space start changing, and the demand for housing starts changing. So you have more diversity, and people still like the large lots and large homes, but there's also people that are looking for smaller houses on smaller lots, that are maintenance-free and lock-and-leave. And that groups includes the single-person households, couples that don't have children, empty nesters, people, maybe their spouses have passed on, those kind of households. And we're trying to accommodate all the different types of households. And households, as you know, go through a life cycle, just like people go through a life cycle. So we want to make sure that in Australia, if somebody comes in and buys their first home, and then they buy their move-up home, and then, as the household changes, now they don't need that much space anymore, that if they want to move into another house, they can stay in a Montecito or stay in Australia. And the only way to do that is provide complete diversity of housing stocks. So that's basically the reason why we're doing that. The only other comment I'd like to make is that, on the retail component, we did remove retail at this site, and we added a retail plaza here, which has more of a pedestrian orientation. And this property down here was identified as light industrial. We changed it to business park. We did have somebody purchase that property, and the person who purchased that property wanted more of a mix of retail, certain types of retail activities, and office development, so more of a floorment versus just light industrial. And our thinking is, we wanted pedestrian orientation here with pedestrian-oriented plaza area. They actually have like a Mexican plaza around here with higher-density residential, and maybe some civic activities here. But one of the main reasons why we took some of the retail out is we want to move it across the street into what we call Community 14, which has a much larger, kind of like a Main Street type function. So, other than that, Mr. Chairman, I have no comments, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions of the applicant? Commissioner Lortano?
Thank you for the retail. I like the fact that you're moving it there. That's, why are there two school sites so very close together?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lortano, this is up to the Liberty School District. I'm really not sure why. Dr. Roger Andrews is the person I talked to. He identified that he didn't need any more school sites, but I actually, unless they anticipate they have that kind of school enrollment, they would need that school, those schools that close together.
Yeah, I was just wondering. It looked like you could walk from one to the other.
I noticed they were fairly close, and I realized you really didn't need another school there, so.
Oh, okay. That was my other question.
Okay, great.
Questions over here?
Please.
You mentioned that someone has purchased the, you know, the future industrial park, business park area. Did they purchase all the land that surrounds the wastewater treatment plant? Or, I mean, do they basically own the whole corner from Rainbow Valley Road along Willis?
Mr. Chairman, they own what's identified as parcel 9.32.
Right.
And 9.37, I believe it is. And also 9.38. Anyway, everything over to the road, this whole big triangle I hear, they own.
Okay.
And then, so that's the answer to that question.
Okay, so, okay. And they are aware of the wastewater treatment plant that's there?
Yes. They do really good due diligence, so I, yes, they're aware of it. And we also had a discussion about the noise and odor control in the 1,000 feet in the development agreement, and?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're still on record for that. Don't want to have another Litchfield Park water system drill. Okay, staff manager?
Mr. Chairman, as you get closer to making a motion, my apologies. You raised one point relative to disclosure relative to the proximity of the wastewater treatment plant, and whether or not that was covered. It's really not. And I think where the direction we're going is that typically we have done stipulations, providing notes on flats, identifying to public the adjacent uses.
Right.
It may be appropriate, commission desires to include a stipulation that redo the normal public notice on flats, that the property, that the subdivisions within, adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant and the business park, that these properties are in proximity to the business park land uses and the wastewater treatment plant, and that are subject to noise and odors and other effects as we resolve those uses, as we have done on other flats.
Do you, David, is that, is that, is that okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Basically, what we're going to, we're going to put a stipulation on plat, on 9.39 and 9.22, and 9.29 and 9.30, all, everything in that, everything that basically is contained within the 1,000 feet that either touches or is adjacent to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The applicant does not have a concern with that stipulation, and I think it would be wise if, once we make the motion, that staff adds that before it goes to council?
Okay.
Is that, is that?
If it's okay with the commission, we'd be glad to do that.
That's okay with the commission.
There's one other one that Harvey may note, that we have done, and we neglected to do here, is that council has also been interested in providing notes, excuse me, stipulations relative to commercial industrial property development, where there's ... stipulations relative to commercial industrial property development where there's residential adjacent, that in this case, that we would probably suggest to the council at that time that the, that the property owner for the business park area posts a sign on the property within, you know, 60 days of the council approval, disowning, notifying the public that this is future business park land, land uses.
Okay. I have one other, I have one other question that came to mind. Is Montecito the 500, the fire station has to be built before the 500 certificate of occupancy is, is issued? Is that, do I have this parcel correct?
Mr. Chairman, I might want to, I believe that there's a stipulation in the province that when you hit over...
Or is it province, which is to south?
Province is, is...
That's Village 10.
Village 10, yes.
Right.
There's a stipulation in Village, in province, Village 10, in the case when you go over 500 units, the fire station has to be there.
Okay, but, but not in Montecito?
Not to my knowledge.
Oh, yes, okay. So both, so this was Village 7, 9, and 10 in that development agreement?
Yes.
Yes. I'm getting a lot of shaking, I'm getting a lot of vertical nods from staff.
Mr. Chairman, David can correct me if I'm wrong, but the PAD for villages 7 and 9 also contains that stipulation that no houses after the 500th unit can be permitted without the fire station being operational.
Okay. David, could you come up, I just want, all the, all the stipulations and all the underlying stipulations for Village 7, 9 run with this density swap, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. We have that on record. All right. Any other questions of staff, the applicant? Anybody from the public like to make a comment on this case? Yes? No? Okay, in that case, I'm going to enclose the public hearing. Any commission discussion other than adding two stipulations to what we have?
Do we need to move for that?
When we make the motion, you're, we're going to add the stipulations on the wastewater and the, what was the other one?
Renunciation of business.
Oh, the sign for the industrial park.
Business interest.
Okay. All right, now can I have a motion concerning this case, please?
I'll move that we approve case number 07-2000017 with the addition of the wastewater stipulation and the sign as discussed by staff.
I have a motion from Commissioner Loretano and a second from Commissioner Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have at 7-0. Thank you very much. Okay, now we are going to formally conduct business on case 07-500000115, which is the preliminary plat for Montecito Village Phase III at Australia Parcel 7.9A, 7 point, excuse me, 9.7A, 9.7B, 9.7C, 9.15A, 9.15B, 9.116A, 9.16B, 9.17A, 9.17B, 9.19, 9.20A, and 9.20B. And I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if there's any additional staff comments. David, do you have anything? All right, seeing none from staff, any additional staff, any additional applicant comments? Seeing none, any, any public comments? In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing on this case. Any commission discussion? We need to, we need to have the additional two stipulations, Bob, for this one, or...
No, Mr. Chairman, notice the area of this plat is beyond that proximity boundary we talked about.
Got it.
And it's not adjacent to the plan, but business park.
Okay, thank you very much. In that case, can I have a motion for this case, please?
I move that we recommend approval of case 07-500-000115, the preliminary plat for Montecito Village Phase III at Australia Parcel 9.7A, 9.7B, 9.7C, 9.15A, 9.15B, 9.16A, 9.16B, 9.17A, 9.17B, 9.19, 9.20A, and 9.20B.
I have a motion from Commissioner Lax and a second from Commissioner Slosser. Sure, thank you, sir. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have at 7-0. Okay. Next on the agenda is case 07-50000017, the preliminary plat for Phase III of Montecito Village at Australia Parcel 9.8. And I'm going to open the public hearing, and David Canning is going to make the presentation on this one also. Take, David, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Subject 36.52 acre property is generally located north of Calistoga Drive and approximately one mile west of Australia Parkway and Montecito Phase III. And to give you another perspective of the parcel's location, I will show you the map from the PAD amendment case, and you'll see that parcel 9.8 falls just outside of the PAD amendment area. Newland Communities is requesting approval of a preliminary plat for Montecito Village Phase III at Australia Parcel 9.8 subdividing 36.52 acres into 79 residential, single-family lots. The proposed residential development will have a gross density of 2.16 dwelling units per acre and a typical lot size of 75 feet by 130 feet. Primary vehicle access to this development will be via South 185th Avenue and South 186th Avenue. And those are the streets right here. Somewhat difficult to see on this exhibit, but 186th Avenue there and 185th, 185th Avenue at this location. Parcel 9.8 will have approximately 24 acres of reserved open space. The tot lot is planned for one of the tracks, and a trail system will be constructed just to the east of the parcel, just beyond this property line. And a connection will be provided from this tract to the trail system that falls in parcels 9.3 and 9.4. And this concludes my presentation. Staff is supporting, recommending approval of this preliminary plat. Staff's available for any questions.
Questions of staff? David, could you, you talked about, I'm sorry, question?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. You go first.
David, one of the items I noted was lots 46, 47 on the map show a grade of 20% or more is the intent, as I read in the materials, to level that or grade it, so to speak, so that we buildable lots?
That is correct.
Okay. And staff supports that?
Staff, please.
Okay.
Other questions?
Well, just, just a comment. Just, just a comment, I, you know, I guess it's not a deal breaker, but it just distresses me that when we tear down hills, I mean, and it seemed like if we had one less lot, which wouldn't really affect the density a whole lot, we could do away with tearing down the hill, but...
Yeah, staff actually made that comment, too, during our first review. We wanted the applicant to provide some more input, and the applicant made a case for we're not preserving that hill due to its location, and they could probably provide more information.
Any other questions?
Do you know what the, the height of that hill is between those two lots? I don't see anybody, we didn't see that today.
I think, I think it's time to ask the applicant to come up. Bring the engineers up.
Good evening, Chairman Gelsor, planning commissioners. My name is Chuck Cader. I'm with Hunzaker and Associates, 1661 East Camelback Road. That, that particular hill is about 16 feet high. It's not a huge hill. I mean, it, it would have, to me, it would have seemed out a place to leave it there. The, the areas that you see over here actually were a little bit more significant, and we did leave those in place.
Okay. Other questions of the applicant? Could you explain, I think staff talked about Track 6 and Track L, which are down in that southeastern corner. Could you explain what, what those are going to be? Is that retention?
I don't see a track, I see Track A.
There's a, there's a...
62, year lot 62.
Or Track G and Track L down, the two tracks in the southeast corner, in the very southeast corner.
There's a Track L and each, two points in the triangle.
Oh, Track, yeah, yes, that is a retention basin.
Okay. And then staff said there was going to be a tot lot somewhere, is that going to be in Track A?
That's going to be Track G.
Track G.
Which is at the intersection of 186th and West Thistle.
Okay. Point, point that out for us.
It is right here.
Okay. Got it. The question, is there any other questions of the applicant?
I have a quick question. You were talking about the hill on 47, that that one you're going to take down, but it's hard for me to tell my eyes aren't going that round. Three, it looks like there's, three, there's a hill as well, and that take up most of that person's backyard? I mean, what, is that one you said you were going to leave all those?
No, that, that one would be coming out as well. The ones that we were going to leave were along the backs of 8, 7, and 8.
Okay.
The, I'm sorry, Commissioner Williams?
I was just going to say, and, you know, maybe it's beating a dead horse.
Please, could you speak up, please?
Maybe it's beating a dead horse, but why can't you put the tot lot, would the tot lot fit on one of the places? Would it be appropriate to put on one of the lots and not tear down the hill and, and build a home on Track G rather than a tot lot?
David, identify yourself, please.
Thank you. David Prescott with Newland Communities, 2850 East Camelback Road. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Williams, we went through it, when the lots, the hillsides we're preserving are the ones where you can see the whole hillsides and the ridge lines after development occurs. These hillsides would, Chuck was pointing out, is when you put houses around there, you're not even, you're not going to be able to see those hills any longer. They're so small. And so we are very careful about taking out any washes or any hillsides, so we don't just, anything that's significant and really contribute to the mountain or the hillside area, we would not take out. So, I mean, we did, we agree with you, but in this case, we're advising that, that these hills are so small that they're not going to really be significant to the development.
Thank you, and I appreciate your being sensitive, because generally you do good work, you know?
Thank you.
So, thank you.
I have a question. The, there is a wash, or I guess what's called a minor impacted jurisdictional water that runs basically between Track 44 and 45, and then, you know, seems to run south down the hill. Is that, is that blue line going to go away, basically through the grading mechanism, and then the, and then the water will just run down the streets?
Yes, it will. The water is actually picked up in the, the storm grain system right at Track A.
Okay.
And takes it all the way down and then drops it out on the other side.
Commissioner Lax? Any other questions of the applicant? All right, anybody from the public like to make comment concerning this case? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and commission discussion? Well, Commissioner Williams has basically said he's not happy with leveling a few of these little hills, and quite honestly, I wish you could leave them and reconfigure, but I'm not going to vote against it. But I'm pleased that at least you're leaving the hills behind 7, 8, and 9. Any other comments before I ask for motion? All right, can I have a motion to approve the preliminary plat?
I'll move, Mr. Chair, to approve case, recommend approval, 07-500-00017, as presented with the stipulations.
All right, I have a motion from vice chair to broker, and I have a second from...
I'll second.
Commissioner Loretano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, ayes have at 7-0. I did close the public hearing on this. Yeah, okay. All right. Sorry. All right, next order of business. Do we need a public hearing on this, Katie, or is this just a regular order of business? Okay, next order of business is a presentation of the 2003 to 2007 general plan progress report, and Katie Wilkin, our, from the staff, will make that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Tonight, I am pleased to present to you our first progress report on our 2003-2013 City of Goodyear general plan. I know many of you were very involved in the creation of our general plan, but I would like to take a moment and give some background to this project and start out by kind of reviewing our current general plan. State statute requires that each municipality in Arizona have a general plan that guides growth and development for that municipality. The 2003-2013 City of Goodyear general plan fulfills that requirement. It was led by a 21-member general plan advisory committee over a 16-month planning process and received considerable assistance from the planning commission. It was ratified by voters on November 4th, 2003, and will expire in November of 2013. State statute also requires that each municipality in Arizona have it, provide an annual report to its legislative bodies and the public on the progress of implementation of the general plan. Now, the state doesn't currently actively enforce this requirement, and when staff first started this project, we contacted many municipalities in the valley, and we couldn't find evidence that any city actually actively does do an annual report each year. However, it is really important that we do provide an update on the status of the general plan. It does give us an opportunity to provide you and council with a comprehensive update of all the planning and development projects that have been going on, and it also gives us an opportunity to provide greater accountability to the public on how we are implementing their goals and vision for their community. This is the first progress report, and it does cover from the time of implementation of the general plan through the end of 2007. However, from this point forward, staff hopes to bring a report of this type to you each So, since the adoption of the general plan, the City of Goodyear has grown considerably. The city has added over 9,000 dwelling units and 25,000 residents in the last four years. The city has also grown by over 70 square miles, and the municipal planning area has been expanded by 110 square miles. The city has gone from the, from the 17th to the 11th largest city in the Maricopa County. The general plan included 11 topical chapters that are referred to as plan elements. Each of these chapters sets goals, objectives, and policies relating to their topic. There are also near-term and long-term implementation activities that are signed in each of these chapters, and the very last chapter of the general plan is an implementation program that compiles all of these near-term and long-term implementation activities. And this is an example page from our general plan, the implementation, near-term implementation program. The near-term implementation program is meant to be implemented in years 2003 to 2008. So to, by the end of this year, we hopefully should have implemented this near-term So, to, by the end of this year, we hopefully should've implemented this, um, near-term implementation program. Um, in this implementation program, the activity was stated, and then the objective that the activity was meant to achieve was also given, the purpose of the activity, a department was assigned lead responsibility for this activity, a priority, and, um, completion date was given, and resources and stakeholders were identified that could help implement those activities.
Katie?
Yes.
One question. Your priority is one top priority, or is three top?
One is top priority.
Yeah.
And this is an example page from the progress report, and as you can see, a status was given for each of these activities, and the status is either complete, ongoing, underway, planned, or delayed. And also, a brief, um, progress report was given for those activities as well. There were forty-two near-term implementation activities set in the general plan. Thirty-four of these, or eighty-one percent, are either complete or underway, and I do wanna note that that is really, um, a remarkable accomplishment by the City of Goodyear. There are many cities throughout the country that, um, aren't able to implement their general plan, um, as Goodyear has, so the city really should be proud of itself for implementing it as it has. There are six activities that are delayed, but this is actually one of the reasons why the general, general plan progress report is a good thing, because it does give us an opportunity to explain why some of the activities we said we were gonna do have been delayed. An example of this is that we said we were going to create a historic district, and we said, I think we were gonna do that in two thousand six. However, we weren't anticipating the passing of Prop Two-O-Seven, which makes it difficult to create things such as historic districts. So, in our report, we've said that, you know, this project has been delayed, and the reason is because Prop Two-O-Seven makes it difficult. And what that does is that shows the community that we're not just ignoring these activities, that we do have legitimate reasons why some of these have been delayed, um, and that we are working on trying to get them completed as soon as we can. The general plan also identified twenty-seven long-term implementation activities, and these are meant to be completed in years two thousand nine to two thousand thirteen. And staff is currently looking at these long-term implementation activities to flush them out and, um, get ready to create a near-term implement, implementation program for, um, two thousand nine to two thousand thirteen. And now, I am gonna briefly go through each plan element and kind of give an update, um, just hit some highlights of some of the activities that we've accomplished relating to each plan element. And the first one is land use. And the L Rio Water Course Master Plan is a regional planning effort that is, um, meant to set a, a regional flood management strategy for the Hilo River. And this was, um, concluded with the adoption of the plan in two thousand six by city council, and the implementation of this plan is currently underway. Um, also, I'm sure you're all very familiar with the progress of our city center, um, the master plan, the specific area plan was approved in two thousand six, and the city actually did receive, um, several awards from Valley Forward and Arizona Planning Association on that specific area plan. Last year, um, general plan amendments for the Arizona State Land Department were processed, and, um, this year, its staff is currently working on processing preliminary P A D rezonings for those state land pieces, and commission should be seeing those, um, sometime this year for consideration. The airport master plan was adopted by Goodyear and Phoenix City Councils in two thousand and seven. Along with the master plan, staff is working with the, um, Phoenix Goodyear Airport to ensure we share development information and don't interfere with their operations. With regards to circulation, does, um, the acquisition of land for a park and ride lot at I Ten and Dyserd is currently underway, and it's anticipated that two hundred and fifty-five spaces will be complete by the end of two thousand and nine. The city is also conducting an intelligent transportation system study, and what this is, is looking at how we can increase our technology to improve our transportation systems, such as cameras at intersections, so signals can be timed depending on the traffic that's there. Also, the signage that lets you know there's an accident ahead, it's also used for Amber Alert a lot, so the city's currently looking at that. There are also two regional transportation studies under, one's underway and one is complete. The Haciapa Framework Study has been completed, and the Hidden Valley Framework Study is currently underway. Both of these are meant to look at, um, frameworks, how, um, different transportation systems connect with each other, it's not meant to set specific alignments. I recommend that if you wanna find out more about these, you can go to the Building Quality Arizona website, B Q A Z dot gov, and they have all sorts of maps and information, um, about these studies on there. The Parks Master Plan is underway, and we're hoping that that will be wrapped up soon. Um, the Parks Master Plan does look at, um, community parks and specialty parks, and to eliminate a mountain neighborhood parks, it doesn't really get into the pocket parks and mini parks that we deal with a lot. The Waterman Wash Study is also underway, um, and that's hopefully gonna be complete this year, hopefully soon, and that study is looking at how the wash will be treated and maintained and protected. Um, with water resources, um, the city has recently hired a water conservationist, and she is working on a water conservation plan. She's also very involved in working on ways to educate the public on water conservation and looking at how the city can conserve water itself. Um, the Black and Beach Facilities Master Plan is, should also be completed this year, anytime now, um, and that looks at our water and wastewater systems. A grant coordinator has been hired, and in his first year, secured two million dollars in grant funds. Um, and Gain is getting Arizona involved in neighborhoods, and if you haven't been involved in this before, I suggest you get involved. This year's Gain event is scheduled for October eighteenth, and it will be held at our Goodyear Community Park again, as it was last year. Um, this is known as National Night Out Around the Country, which is held in August, but obviously, that doesn't work well for Arizona, so Arizona created Gain, which is always held in October, to give, um, our citizens a chance to meet their neighbors and promote safety in neighborhoods. The Housing Rehab Program has invested over two million dollars in eighty-eight homes in Goodyear since ninety, ninety-two, so that's a significant investment. With Public Services, the Public Safety Advisory Committee was created in two thousand and five, and charged with making policy recommendations to city council. Their final report was presented in two thousand and seven, and details recommendations regarding to police, fire, and other public safety. One of the few near-term implementation activities for cost of development was to update our C I P regularly, and that is currently underway. Our dark sky ordinance was adopted with our lighting ordinance, and we actually did receive an award from Arizona Planning Association for that ordinance as well, and as you've seen, those, some of those lighting ordinances come through. Um, a brownfields commission has been created, and our Commissioner Williams is heading up that commission, I believe, still. That, um, commission is actually on hold right now, we're waiting for approval on our plan of action from the E P A, and once we get that, the, um, inventorying of sites will begin. The Litchfield Revitalization Corridor was created in two thousand four, and the Redevelopment Vision and Action Plan was presented to council in two thousand and five. Um, establishing a redevelopment area has been really important to the city. Um, because we had a redevelopment area, we were able to apply and receive community development block grant funds, which we otherwise wouldn't have been eligible for, and the redevelopment area also was, helped us in recruiting Cancer Treatment Centers of America. An Arts and Culture Commission has been established, and they will be making recommendations to council on public art projects. The Bullard Wash Bridge is one of their first projects that they made recommendations on. You probably have all seen the monument signs around town by now, also, that contributed to community character. So now, on to our general plan amendments. There have been eighteen general plan amendments approved since the adoption of the general plan, thirteen of these are major amendments, and five are minor amendments. And this is a chart, I know it's difficult to read, but this is a chart in your progress report, and, um, what we did was, we looked at each, um, general plan amendment and looked at how it affected build-out in terms of units and population. As you can see, Sonoran Valley alone added, has the potential to add ninety thousand units Um, these general plan amendments did add a hundred and ten thousand dwelling units to our planning area, and has the potential to add three hundred thousand residents. So our projected build-out for population is now six hundred and thirty thousand residents. The general plan amendments also affected our, um, land use distribution. The greatest change was the rural residential, which went from twenty-three percent of total land use to ten percent, and open space increased from ten percent of total land use to twenty-six percent, largely due to the B L M's, that, B L M lands that were annexed with the Sonoran Valley annexation. And as you can see, support services, um, in general, which include, um, open space and parks and the airport, um, have increased significantly. Staff updated the land use map to include these general plan amendments, and you did receive those in your packets. Um, it hasn't been fully updated to reflect changes to our circulation plan, such as State Route Two Thirty-three, but the land use plan itself, um, has been updated. I'm not gonna go through all the commercial and residential projects that were included in the progress report, but I would like to point out that if you do wish to learn more about those, um, that you go to Economic Development's new website, um, if you haven't already, which is DestinationGoodyear.com. It's a website they're using for recruitment and promotional, um, purposes, and it just has a lot of information and a lot of latest and greatest on projects happening in Goodyear. Also, there have been sixteen zoning ordinance text amendments processed since the creation of the general plan, and over sixty rezoning cases processed. Um, so as you can see, we've been busy. And again, I've mentioned some of the awards and recognition the city has received with regards to planning and development, so I won't go through all of those. Um, so with that, I will conclude my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this, and, um, staff is recommending that, um, commission recommend to council acceptance of this plan.
Comments for, comments or questions of staff? Commissioner Williams? What's that look on your face? I'll come back to you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Lex?
Katie, I think there are two of the delayed, or items that we consider delayed, that have no progress to date.
Yes. Yes.
Being the transfer of development rights, and I guess that's, that...
No, there, there was one more.
Yeah, no, 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 but there was one, but, um, uh, it appears to be just appear in two, two different, two different tabs.
Two point eight.
Two point eight and, and four point one.
Yes.
Um, is there sort of a, just, some sort of justification for, for why nothing is happening?
I don't have any.
Okay.
You said, um, transfer of development.
Right, the, the, right, the piece on the transfer of development rights where there's no progress to date, that, that appears to be the only one where really nothing's going on.
Um, no, there, um, well, we allow, you know, in large P A Ds, we allow for transfer densities, there's not been any, um, desire by any developer to wanna transfer development rights from one area of the city to another. I believe there's legislation now that's going through the state to allow for jurisdictional, um, exchanges of density that'll allow that, um, but, um, but no, we haven't done anything on that today. And I, I'm not familiar with, I couldn't hear what you said on the other one.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, I was just, just curious, I don't have an issue with it.
So, we are doing it to some degree, and, you know, we haven't had the time to look at that one specifically.
Other questions of staff or comments? I, I have, I have a, I have a comment and a, and then a question. Katie, on page three of the report, it looks like the, um, nineteen ninety census data and the nineteen ninety-five census data are exactly the same, and I think the ninety-five didn't get updated.
I think you're correct.
And so, you know, we might wanna make a, an ink change on that before we send it Next question I have is on page twenty-two, um, the design guidelines update has been, we haven't done anything since February before I got on the P N Z of two thousand and one, and the, I guess the question is, is the goal to have, to redo our design guidelines in the future, or are we gonna just update what we have, or?
I think I'll defer to senior staff.
I'll take the senior, I'll take the answer from senior staff.
The three white old guys over here.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, uh, we were just discussing that before you brought it up.
Oh, okay, well, see, I do read the stuff.
No, and I, and we appreciate that. Um, I, I don't have a specific answer for that, because the design guidelines were, had just been adopted shortly before the general plan was adopted, so, uh, we, we were discussing what would be the exact intent of, of an update. Uh, there are, we do know that there are some areas that may not be covered in sufficient detail as, uh, as, as we might like, so that would, that is a possible project that we could undertake. Um, what, what we will be doing is looking at the items that are delayed, or the items that are not complete, along, and reevaluating each one of those to, to see if they should turn into a project that we should get going within the, the near, the balance of the near term, which is basically this year. Um, and then, we'll also be looking at all the long, the long-term projects, as, uh, Katie indicated, and then we'll be formulating a plan for those and bringing that back to the commission and council for, uh, prioritization.
Are, are we allowed to delete any of these items, or we can just say, delayed indefinitely till the next general plan update? The, the reason I'm saying that is, is our design guidelines are reasonably comprehensive, and we also tend to work with P A Ds, and so they have their own individual design guidelines, which, you know, tend to supersede even ours. Um, and I guess my question is, do we really wanna spend staff time, you know, is this something that we wanna spend staff time doing? Do we need to update them? I mean, the one thing we do need to update is, um, manufactured home design guidelines, and that, and maybe we can fold that into doing this and saying, okay, we, when we do that, we've accomplished, you know, accomplished this.
No, I, I agree. Like I said, I think there's a couple of areas that the design guidelines don't cover as well as they could, that's one of them. I think we've had discussions before too about industrial buildings, uh, that could maybe could use some adjustment there. But, um, overall, the design guidelines that we have are pretty good, uh, and relative to other communities, they're very good. So, it, it does denote that it's an update, so, uh, we certainly can take a look at it and see if it needs any tweaking, and that probably wouldn't take a whole lot of staff time.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from, for staff, or for senior staff? I, I'd like to make one comment. I, I actually did serve on the general, and you did too, two, Commissioner Lex and I both served on the general plan update committee, and that was sixteen months and twenty-three meetings, and a lot of time, and, um, I am very impressed with what we've been able to accomplish in the last five years. It, you know, most often, these things get done, put on the shelf, and then, ten years later, we come back and say, oh, we didn't do that. And, um, I commend staff, and I, you know, and I'll give the commission a little pat on the back too, because we've kind of worked through a lot of this stuff, and, uh, I, I was impressed with, you know, this review, and I think this is, I'm very glad that you did this, um, and this was, has been well-received by, um, the chairman, and I'm assuming that the rest of the commission, um, enjoyed looking through this and seeing what, what has been accomplished. So, a well-done from, from us, from me.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to note too- I would like to note too, that if there is any information you wish to have seen in the report, um, you know, you can always let staff know so that our next annual report has even better information. And I did want to note too, that staff is going to be working on maybe creating this report into a more easily digestible format for citizens so we can get it on our website with the highlights of what we've been doing so that, um, it's readily available for them.
I, I think the one thing that, you know, that, um, see, Long Range Planning Manager Smith talked about is on some of these things that nothing has been done, maybe we want to put a comment on what we're thinking about doing in the near-term, one to two years or we're going to, this is going to be delayed for the next three to five years. I think instead of just saying nothing's been done, I think we might want to, you know, rephrase that and say, this is where, this is where we think we're going with this or we're not going to put a lot of staff time in it. And I think that would just, you know, answer the questions. Any other comments?
I, I had one comment I would like to make. And thank you for those remarks. Anything, any suggestions we get to help make it better, we appreciate. I just wanted to go on record commending Katie for the work that she's done on this. Uh, everything you see here is really her handiwork from the writing to the compilation of the statistics to the preparation of the, the document, which I think look, even looks really professional by, you know, you would have thought it was done by a print shop or something, but, uh, Katie's done a fantastic job and I just wanted to let her know and you know that we noticed it and appreciated it. Thank you.
Well, I'm keeping mine to go with my general plan from five years ago. Commissioner Lacks, did you want to say something?
Uh, no, I just would, I guess I, I'd like to second that. It just goes to show that all of those 23 meetings actually mean something.
All right. Um, I'm going to close this item unless there's any other comments other than a, a well done from the commission and a well done from your bosses, Katie.
I need to move.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to recommend, uh, that we forward this on with our hearty endorsement to the city council for acceptance?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Loretta, a second from Vice Chair DeBrocker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it, 7-0. Last but not least, God, I just moved this one wrong. Staff Communications, Harvey?
Yes, uh, tomorrow morning at nine o'clock at, uh, Venita, at, in our conference room, we'll have our quarterly development advisory forum. You're welcome to attend. We'll discuss various issues relating to the development process, uh, updates. And, um, second of all, um, as you recall, we are in the process of establishing a committee for reevaluating the rural development standards, um, design guidelines on mobile homes. And Joe Schmitz has been working on that and I, um, I believe he has established May 30th is the first meeting day for that, that group.
April 30th.
I'm sorry.
What time?
April 30th?
6:00 PM.
Yeah, that's fine. That, that's Wednesday, the 30th, right? Okay.
Sorry, April 30th.
You'll send an email out so we can put it on our calendar.
We've been trying to contact you to get the confirmation of...
I was out of town the last two days.
Carol's also on the committee. How do you know?
I'm, I'm okay on the 30th.
30th is fine. Yeah, I think Wednesday, the 30th.
Review the issues and get started.
How long do you think that meeting is going to be?
I think it's going to take terribly long. Um, probably on the, on the order, maybe an hour, an hour and a half, I would think, for the first meeting.
Okay.
And we're looking at a total of five minutes or more, six minutes?
Yeah, just by way of information, um, I've kind of estimated that we, we may have as many as five meetings. The first one will be just to review the subject. The second one will be to come back and try to address anything that we've identified that, uh, the committee wants additional information on. The third one, uh, would probably be a public meeting that we will hold, take in public input in the mobile area. And the third, a fourth one would, we would have a meeting in good news. And the sixth one would be to review it, uh, the input and see if we, if we're appointing a fourth and a foundation back.
Will there be any homework sent out before this meeting?
Yeah, we just confirmed the date, we're trying to confirm the date today.
Okay.
And we'll be sending, uh, the packet out, uh, the, shortly of the information that was compiled before, along with a list of committee member names and, uh, that's, that's mostly it.
Speaking of, is there any other staff communication? Cause I, I have something I'd like...
Just one meeting in May, May 21st will be our next regular meeting. That's all I have unless you have any questions.
Could I ask the clerk to the commission to send out a new roster of contact information? And also, um, the chair would appreciate it if the commission would let the clerk know how you want to handle any public contacts because the, the clerk often gets a call in and saying, can I have the home address or email of the commissioners? And if you want your stuff out, tell her so that she knows. If you don't want it out, that's fine too. But I think that, I think we need, we need to give Joe that courtesy so that, um, she knows. And as I always say publicly, I'm in the book. Call me.
You don't have to be contacted. I mean, it's, it's, um, it's totally up to you if you want to...
Do you want to send us an email to reply to you?
She did. She did.
Oh, okay.
If you would just let us know because we get requests for your email address and your regular address or your telephone number, if you want us to release that.
No problem. And I'll send an email.
Yeah, I know, send them now. But, um, a lot of stuff that comes through. I can focus forward to...
Okay. Any other, did I miss something? Did I forget?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion, motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Sure, sounds good.